Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District being held on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the District Administration Building. After the Pledge of Allegiance, let's please have a moment of silence to remember Robert McIntyre, retired physical education teacher. Thank you very much, everybody. Moving on now, we have a few presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bon Jovi. So, Lambren, I'll hand it over to you to introduce the Governor.
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight, I have Justin Wood here to present the External Audit Report from Newton-Hausler.
Thank you, Lorraine. It's coming through, right?
Green, yeah.
Yeah, it's green. Great, alright, we're good, we're good. Green is good, I thought so. Thank you very much. So, as Lorraine said, my name is Justin Wood. I am from Newton-Hausler, PC. We are the external auditors for the district. Quick introduction on myself and my firm. We are one hundredth year of existence. I have been there for twenty-three of those. I've been a partner for eight, and I believe I've been coming to Goshen Central School District for all twenty-three of my years that I've been here. So, and just want to thank the Board for their commitment to the school district, as well as Lorraine and Amanda, the Treasurer, and all of their staff. You know, we have like a very short window, about a week in August, that we're here, and it's very demanding on them as far as providing us the information that we need to do what we need to do. And they do a great job of providing the information timely so that we can complete the audit, and then there's some follow-up in September. And, you know, we provide a draft report, and then, you know, follow-up with the final report. I know that Jennifer, my partner, met with the Audit Committee this evening and went over this report in detail, so therefore, I'm not going to bore everybody with going through this thing in total. However, there are a couple important parts of the report that I do think it's important to mention. So, there is the regular audit of the financial statements, which is the bulk of the document. We give our opinion on that on page one, which is what we refer to as an unmodified opinion. It's otherwise known as a clean opinion. It is the highest level of assurance that we can give that the financial statements are free from material of the statement. There is also the internal control letter on page eighty-four, which is our report on the internal control on compliance and other matters. Again, giving an unmodified opinion, our highest level assurance. And also on the report on extra crash room activity funds on page eighty-six, which also is an unmodified opinion, our highest level assurance. One report that you'll see that is loose in the reports that says is stamped draft is what we refer to as the single audit. It is a compliance audit of a specific federal award program. This year was the Special Education Cluster. The reason that it is stamped draft is because the federal government has not issued the compliance supplement that we are required to audit on, and we cannot issue the final report until they issue the final report. Once they do, we will review it, ensure that we've completed the proper audit procedures. If not, we will go back and do those additional procedures if they are needed. We would be surprised if there were. But until the final compliance supplement is issued, we cannot issue the final report. Overall, just quickly, the Goshen School District is in strong financial condition. They have well-funded reserves, and they added to the insurance reserve, the capital reserve, and the TRS reserve in 2425. We have implemented Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement 101 as required. And just a note, looking in the future, you know, with increasing special education costs, that part of the budget will need to be monitored closely in the 2526 year. But other than that, if there are not any questions, that would conclude my presentation. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, my next presentation will be Miss Lambren and myself going to put the rollover budget. Good evening, everyone. So, we wanted to start the budget process a little early. Really, this part is just talking about a rollover budget, and as much for the public as for the Board of Ed, is to explain exactly what we mean by rollover budget, and how do we come to that. So, what is a rollover budget? It's really, it's exactly what it sounds like. It's really just taking what we have now, and so there's no changes to it. So, we all have a lot of wish lists. Say, "Well, we need this. We need that. We need this position." And, you know, I can list half a dozen positions right off the bat that I would love to have here for Goshen. But that's how a rollover budget is. It's taking all of the exact programs we have, the exact staffing we have, and just rolling it over. So, as you can see, there's some things we take into account, including, you know, we have set costs. We know that the health insurance is going to go. We estimate that at about 6%. We know that the BOSI's costs are going to go up. We estimate that at about 5%. So, again, things we keep in mind as we're starting to discuss next year's budget. You know, we have increasing, as the auditor just said, we do have to monitor that special ed line because we, just like pretty much every district in the state, we have increasing special education needs so that we have to monitor those funds. We're going to, we know that we're going to be continuing to do professional development for all of our staff. But as we go along, we certainly look for efficiencies, so meaning, you know, we'll be taking a look at any breakage or any retiring we have. We'll look at saving on electric, gas, all the utilities. The auditor just talked about the fund balances, so we do keep those at appropriate levels. So, we're right at the cusp, pretty much, of our 4%. We're just a little above that. But we did come down from last year. So, we're down from 8% to about 5%, which is appropriate. We're continuing with the Facilities Committee to talk about and look at what are the needs of the district. We know we have facility needs, and we'll be, at a later meeting, we'll be talking about, you know, some of those items. And of course, just like every school district, you know, there's a replacement cycle for equipment, for furniture, and certainly for technology needs that changes so rapidly. So, you're constantly replacing the technology. So, we looked at our enrollment, of course, as part of the budget process. And you can see it goes up and down, so where it has the 2526, and then the projected 2627. It's up and down. At the end of the day, we're down ninety-three students from this year. Now, that's not going to, that's spread across all grades. But most grades, it's down, and you can see a few grades, it comes back up. But that's certainly going to drive our budgeting.
Thanks. So, taking those items into consideration, the 5% on BOSI's costs, and the 6% on benefits and our salaries, we have a total projected rollover budget of $102,25830, and that's a $5.2 million increase, or 5.4% over our current budget. And just for facts, the current budget increase was 5.4% also between the 2425 school year and the 2526 school year. So, we are somewhat in line even just with a rollover. We do, of course, have some unknown budget items, and these still stay unknown for quite a while, even sometimes up until March, and they include special education, the annual reviews. We don't know if we will have any different out-of-district placements next year. We also don't know about our graduating students. Are they aging out? And who do we have coming into the district? What are our preschool students coming into kindergarten? And what are their related services as needed? BOSI services, again, we don't know what the actual rate will be. I use 5% in this example. Their rates typically come out in January or February, and they get finalized also as they move along into March, April, and May. May is when the final service request is due to BOSI's. Retirements, these are due to the superintendent by January 15th, which is helpful because it is earlier than it used to be in prior contracts. And once we have those, we can look at any attrition or breakage, as Mr. Bon Jovi mentioned earlier. And also, health insurance. Health insurance, we've seen some minor increases in this area in the last few years. So, I'm hopeful again for the new year, but we also have to sort of plan ahead, and that's why I use 6% as a conservative number right now for the projection. We also have rate increases in our other benefits as well. I didn't list those up here, but we have TRS and ERS typically do have an increase in their expenses. So, I used 6% for that as well for now. The district-wide insurance, I put this on here because the last two years, we've seen pretty large increases, double-digit increases. For example, in 2526, we had a 13% increase, and in 2425, we had a 12% increase. So, I use the same number, again, being conservative by putting worst-case scenario in there for the rollover budget, just to give you an idea. Now, I've broken down the sections of the budget into six categories, and here you can see the proposed changes or the rollover changes, I should say, they're not really proposed right now, and the percentage change. Salaries and benefits, you can see, are ranging about 5.6% and 6.7% overall, and that is your typical increase anyway in a regular budget. And you can see, they also make up the largest section of the overall budget as well. So, they make the biggest impact. Contractual supplies and utilities, while I kept supplies and contractual items level, I did increase utilities, so the overall increase is 3.9%. But this, we're going to have to keep an eye on all of these items because of the economy, the way it is right now. The BOSI's, you can see that 5% projection straight across. And our inter-fund transfers, I left the same. And the reason for that is because we talked about possibly doing a capital project or a capital outlay project with general fund money in next year's budget. So, if anything, it may go up, but as we go along and develop the budget for you, we'll have those discussions. And then, debt service is the actual numbers for next year, because that one, we do know about. That's set in stone, and that's a small increase of two tenths of a percent. And then, you can see our overall change. What are our next steps? Well, we're going to review our current year's aid when those numbers come out in November. Those are issued after November 15th, so we want to make sure that we're in line with what was projected by the Governor or the Legislature back in April. And then, we anticipate the Governor's budget in January and begin planning our revenue. The 2627 budget planning meetings start with administration typically in December and go into January and go forward as needed. We want to continue reviewing the enrollment projections, and again, consider attrition for any retirements and also the breakage. And we always want to look at our projected tax levy cap that is due in March, so that sort of kicks off the revenue projections as well as the state aid from the Governor's numbers. And then, we begin our presentations to the Board in February. I think that's...
So, certainly, we'll be continuously monitoring the budget. As I said earlier, you know, when I'm out and about, and I see people, you know, people have a lot of things they would like to have, and I agree. I'd like to have them too, but it's also our job. We need to... Our goal will always be, we want to provide our students with the best possible educational opportunities at a price that the taxpayers can support. So, if you have any questions for the public, you can reach out to myself, Miss Lambren, or Dr. Carter for anything that you might need. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So, at this time, Dr. Carter, Dr. Carter and Dr. Hendershot will be presenting multi-sensory reading presentation.
Good job on this joint.
That's it.
Alright, good evening, everyone. So, Dr. Hendershot and I are here this evening to talk to you all a little bit about multi-sensory reading. I know this is something of large interest throughout our district, and of course, within our central office, across our buildings, and with our Board of Education. So, we put together as much information as we could this evening regarding the programs that we offer here in district. A lot of information regarding certifications, trainings, and also two of the most predominantly used programs across our district. So, Ryan, would you switch, please? Thank you. So, just a quick overview. We'll talk about multi-sensory reading, like exactly what it is. First, discussing multi-sensory instruction. Talk about where we were, beginning with the 2017 school year, where we are today, and where we want to go in the very near future. So, Dr. Hendershot is going to start off talking about the Part 200 Regulations.
That's right. So, Part 200 of the Commissioners' Regulations is what governs special education services. And within the regulations, it speaks specifically about specially-designed instruction as well as least restrictive environment. Specially-designed instruction, in that area, the goal is to help the child access the same curriculum as their classmates and meet grade-level expectations. It means changing the what, how, or how often something is taught to help a child with a disability learn better. The regulations also speak of the least restrictive environment, and in that area, that's where children with disabilities should learn with their peers as much as possible. It can be a support or services that can be provided within the regular general education setting or in other settings if needed, such as special class settings, a resource room, small groups, areas that are all determined by the Committee on Special Education. So, who can provide specially-designed reading instruction? The regulation ensures that specially-designed reading instruction is not just delivered by any teacher, but by someone with specific training and certification to address reading disabilities. In our district, 95% of the teachers in the PPS department hold certification in general education and special education. So, that means they're highly qualified to teach general education, but also they have an additional layer of special education certification, which allows them, or gave them, the skills they needed to differentiate, to analyze, and provide multi-sensory reading. 14% of our pupil personnel staff hold a third certification. So, in addition to general education certification, special education certification, they also hold literacy certification. So, our teachers are highly qualified to be able to provide multi-sensory reading. And in addition, our speech-language pathologists have participated in trainings to support literacy within the classroom settings, within individual or group speech sessions to support literacy within our district.
So, as we've covered a little bit about specially-designed instruction, which is where we might often see multi-sensory reading instruction, we felt that it was necessary to first, at least, try to inform everyone exactly what multi-sensory instruction is. So, when you think of multi-sensory instruction, the key principle of it is simple. It's the engagement of more than one sense during a learning task. So, when you think about the senses, we think of sight, we think of hearing, we think of touch, and we think of movement. And so, any combination of the senses during a learning task is multi-sensory instruction. The belief is that this helps to make learning certainly more engaging, very clear, assist with the processing of the information, and later leads to quick recall of the information, which is very important. If I were to provide you with a common example of multi-sensory instruction, it's probably easiest for us all to relate to driving, learning to drive. So, when you're learning to drive, you're reading traffic signs, taking in all of the information visually. You might be listening to your driving instructor, or mom, or dad, in my case. And then, you're also steering, you're braking, you're using turn signals, and you're receiving response while pressing on the accelerator. And so, you're using multiple senses during a learning task. That is multi-sensory instruction at its finest. And so, now we move into multi-sensory reading instruction. And so, we build on everything that we just spoke of. But multi-sensory reading instruction is a core component of structured literacy, which is everything that we've been talking about with science of reading, of course, over the last school year and even before that. And so, this is instruction that requires the use of more than one sense, as we've discussed, but it's for the explicit purpose of creating strong connections between letters, sounds, and words, right, reading instruction. And so, it's important to understand that it is explicit in that skills are taught directly. It is systematic. Skills are taught in a sequence. So, we go from the more simple skills, and we build on those and introduce more complex skills, systematic. It's cumulative. So, with cumulative instruction, we introduce skills. We essentially master skills and introduce new skills that build on those previously learned. And it's diagnostic and responsive, which is extremely important. Diagnostic meaning that we continue to monitor students' levels and growth, and then we customize instruction based on needs that we see for each individual student. Multi-sensory reading instruction provides students with multiple options to better understand, make connections with, and retain that information, which, again, as previously mentioned, leads to, hopefully, very, very quick recall. This helps students to learn to read using all of their senses. And so, when we think of multi-sensory reading instruction, it's very common to say or repeat, "See it, say it, do it" during learning tasks. So, "See it, say it, do it." And if I were to provide you with some examples, you know, if you were to walk into one of our classrooms, you might see us teaching a letter sound. And so, if we're teaching a letter sound, I might hold up a card that has the letter sound, like "SH," for instance, and it may also display a ship, an object that has the "SH" sound in it. And then, I might have the student say the sound out loud, which allows them to, of course, say it, but also listen to themselves and listen to others saying it. So, you have the auditory response. And then, students will usually either, you know, trace in air or trace on a card, on a desk, or even in sand, if available. They'll trace the actual sound itself, which then is your kinesthetic and tactile. And then, we go right into the doing, which would be reading and eventually writing the words using the sounds learned. And so, again, using this approach makes learning a little bit more engaging, clearer, and hopefully, it leads to great retention and recall. And so, when you think of multi-sensory reading, it is very common for you to think of Orton-Gillingham and Wilson reading.
So, the visual that we have projected up on the board, that was taken from the Wilson reading system. And there's been a lot of discussion about Orton-Gillingham versus Wilson reading. So, what's important to note is, an approach is a way of thinking about how to address an issue. A program is the course of action that we take that applies the principles of the approach. So, Orton-Gillingham is an approach. An approach is not a curriculum, and it's not owned by an agency or organization. Wilson reading is a program that applies the principles of the Orton-Gillingham approach. The Wilson Reading Company had designed a program, a specific scope and sequence that delivers specially-designed instruction in the area of reading. In its purest form, teachers using the Orton-Gillingham approach do so without a dedicated program. They're creating all of the materials that they need in order to implement the principles within the classroom. So, you'll see in the Venn diagram, when comparing the two, the approach versus the program, they're both evidence-based. They focus on explicit, direct, structured, multi-sensory instruction on how the English language works. The Orton-Gillingham approach has been around since the 1930s, and it is a teaching philosophy. Having said that, there are several individuals who have created their own programs or have received accreditation through the International Dyslexia Association and have developed a curriculum using the Orton-Gillingham name in their company. But when it all goes back to the difference between the two, Orton-Gillingham is an approach, and Wilson reading is a program. So, how do our IEPs address reading disabilities? So how do our IEPs address reading disabilities? Special education teachers, based on their certification and the instruction that they've received through their certification, look at the student's strengths, their challenges, and how the student learns best. And this is where multisensory comes into play, whether they're a visual learner, an auditory learner, a kinesthetic learner. There's no one size fits all when it comes to reading. Instruction is customized for every student individually. When students are identified through the Committee on Special Education as requiring multisensory reading, the reading instruction is taught explicitly, it's taught systematically, and it is grounded in research on the science of reading. The IEPs do not list a specific methodology or program because each child learns differently and responds differently to the interventions that are provided to them. Because of that, by not naming a specific program on the IEPs, it gives the teachers the flexibility to be able to adjust their teaching, to choose an approach that works best for the individual student, and can modify that based upon the student growth within their settings that they're providing this reading instruction. If new needs crop up, they're able to shift gears and pull from methodologies that work best and address the goals that are listed on the IEP. It also gives teachers the flexibility to use different methods or tools. They could use something from Wilson Reading, they could use something from an Orton Gillingham developed curriculum through a company. But what they're doing is, what the teachers are doing, is they're using the goals that were developed at the CSC meeting to drive the instruction. So all of our students within the district that receive multisensory reading are receiving evidence-based, high-quality instruction, and the teachers are allowed to adapt that curriculum or combine programs if needed. The IEP goals are the targets of what we're going to address within the special classes, within the resource rooms, or within the general education setting when they're providing multisensory reading. The goals list what the targets are, what the students are expected to learn within a year, and what they're going to achieve, and how those goals are going to be progress
So we wanted to discuss where we started. So in the 2017-2018 school year, Dr. Henner shot arrived in the Goshen Central School District as the Director of PPS. Of course, we had specially designed instruction reading in the district, and we wanted to share with you exactly how how it was provided in district. So you see here on the board, the various settings that we provided, the SDI reading. So we had a 15-1 setting at GIS during the traditional ELA block. We did have consultant teacher services, and it was provided at the high school level. We had a classroom teacher who was actually providing consultant teacher services outside of the regular school day, which is very unique. And then we also had specially designed instruction that was provided every other day at the middle school in a learning lab setting. And so during this time, as you see on the board here, we had three staff members who had their credentials and training that allowed for them to implement multisensory reading instruction using the Orton Approach and the Wilson Reading Program. So 2017-2018, Dr. Henner shot arrives, I was actually still at the building level. And then we move into 2018, which would have been my first year in central office, and Dr. Henner shot, of course, is still with us.
Yes. So in after the 2017-2018 school year, change the remain to our continuum of services through PPS. We found after an audit was done at that time that the district was noncompliant in the delivery of specially designed instruction as reported on the IEPs, therefore changes remain. We created daily special classes to address reading and literacy, and a resource room was introduced to the continuum of services in Goshen. All of the SDI programs that you see listed above are evidence-based, grounded in research, and supported by evidence. The special class reading was developed at the secondary level to provide additional literacy support. And resource room, while it's a three hours minimum that needs to be delivered, we provide it on a daily basis, either 36 or to 40 minutes a day, so that there is consistency for the students in that area, and they're able to carry the skills from one day to the next.
And so with that, we want to discuss our staff credentials. So from 2018 to current date, you have in front of you a list of those individuals who have received specialized training, and who have also acquired some very valuable certifications. So what you notice when you look through, there are certain phrases, if you will, such as accreditation, accreditation plus, you see certified academic language therapist, and we don't assume that everyone knows exactly what we're talking about when we list that. And so we just wanted to take a moment to explain that to you briefly. So when you when you talk about a reading program, program gaining accreditation, usually it's reviewed by the International Dyslexia Association. And so if you reach accreditation status, it means that it has been reviewed, and it has been approved, and meets the stringent requirements not only of of science of reading, but also the requirements and standards of the International Dyslexia Association. When you move into accreditation plus, this means that the program not only meets all of those standards, but also requires a quite intensive supervised practicum. So you have individuals who are putting in hundreds of hours with individuals and receiving true hands-on experience in implementing the philosophies, for instance, of Orton Gillingham. So as you move down the list, you'll see that we have certified academic language therapist, and this is no simple task either, and extremely valuable in a school district setting. And so a certified academic language therapist is highly trained, specializing in reading, writing, spelling, and language, and especially those students with dyslexia diagnoses. This requires approximately 700 clinical hours supervised. There are multiple tasks, there are multiple lessons that have to be videotaped and sent in, and there's also a competency exam that has to be passed. With that, there's also a certain level of education that must be acquired to qualify to be potentially a certified academic language therapist. And so again, this is a certified expert in how language works, which for us in multisensory reading is how letters, sounds, and words, and grammar all work together. And of course, the goal is to help our students to learn to read, right? To put all that information together to help our students learn to read, and that's learners at all levels with such a reading deficiency. So they're providing that structured, individualized, that structured, individualized instruction that's required, of course, in alignment with science of reading. They're using evidence-based and multisensory instruction, and the goal is to build those language skills that our students can take with them throughout life. Very important, of course. When we talk about a health being a specialist, you know, they're they're trained in reading and language difficulties, but I think the key is to understand that their abilities to truly personalize learning experiences based on the immediate needs of the students, I mean, that is their expertise, that's exactly what what we want in those providing multisensory. So collectively, if you look at our staff credentials, I hope you see that we've made tremendous growth. We have multiple teachers who are currently certified, either Level 1 Wilson. We do have a certified academic language therapist that we do have going out into multiple buildings throughout the district. Multiple teachers trained in Orton Gillingham. We also have a teacher who has taken it upon herself to to pursue such training, and we look forward to that, you know, progressing and being completed. We have multiple teachers who continue to receive training with the online academy, but then we've also worked together collaboratively to provide training throughout the district. And as we progress through the slides, you'll see that it's actually an extensive amount of training in multisensory reading instruction. So here's your first look at implementation and training.
So this is a visual representation of the programs and trainings that have been brought to the district since the 2017 school year. It includes the dates of implementation training and the grades that teacher, our staff members were in at the time of the training. All of the programs listed in this chart are still being provided, with the exception of iRead, because that happens to be a program that was discontinued. But these are all being provided to our students with disabilities, and professional development remains ongoing. So while there might be implementation training dates, we're still providing the coaching to our teachers through the companies where we bought these programs from. And then we also broke it down a little bit further in looking at our staff, and this this slide breaks down the training our staff members have participated in, in as it relates specifically to Orton Gillingham and Wilson, and it includes the grades where teachers with training are currently assigned. So you can see from this, all of our students with disabilities have access to multisensory reading from kindergarten through 12th grade.
All right. And so I know that we're talking a lot about specially designed instruction, right? But I also think at this time, it's really important to mention that although it may not be specially designed instruction in our general education settings, we also utilize foundations and just words and hegarty so that we're still implementing a multisensory approach, especially at our younger levels, and trying to have that reach for all of those students, just about every student who could benefit from a multisensory approach. So although we're really focusing on where we are by way of SDI and credentials, we also want you to know that it's certainly being addressed on the general education side as And so where do we want to be? Where do we see ourselves going rather quickly? Well, the most important thing here is that it's very clear, we want to continue to use evidence-based programs and materials that align with the science of reading, and we want to grow with those programs, and we want our students to grow with those programs.
And we encourage our staff members to continue to seek certifications, and we provide the opportunities for them. We'll find the resources if we have a teacher who is interested in receiving a certification in multisensory reading. We will look to find those resources so that they can participate in those programs.
And so it's worth mentioning that many of you are aware, our budgets do have lines for professional development and training, both at a district level, at a PPS level, and at the building levels. And so we do collaborate to utilize those funds to provide the training as needed, and we'll continue to seek that out. We also have many who approach us and ask. And if that is the case, we try very hard to make that happen because, of course, it's very beneficial. Moving on, we already do utilize data, and of course, that drives a lot of our decision-making when it comes to instruction. So we're going to continue with data-driven instruction, targeting individual needs. You'll hear a little bit more through some of the building reports, and as I as I give my report a little later this evening, we're always looking for ways to better manage our data so that we can really gather it and analyze it and make those decisions together.
And we also encourage collaboration between the Special Education Department and the General Education staff as well. We're always looking to see what is being used across K-12 to meet the needs of our students. But it's also important we keep a pulse on where our students are and what their needs are so that we can adapt, bring in new programs, or provide additional coaching and training as necessary to meet the students' needs.
And so I think the slide prior, it had a lot of start dates and implementation dates, and you were able to see some end dates as well. And so I bring that up because our goal moving forward is to maintain flexibility as we continue to seek out and select those programs that we consider to be the right tools for the job. So we understand that children's needs, their instructional needs, change just as they change. And so we've got to be willing to first figure out what this student needs, diagnose, and then we have to be willing to basically provide, right? We've got to go out, seek the correct program, and provide, and we believe that that's very ongoing, very fluent, and so we will maintain flexibility with that. And I think that's the luxury of multisensory reading instruction, right? It's very flexible. It allows you to have the flexibility to meet individual needs of a student. Anything else, Dr. Henner shot?
No.
Okay. That concludes our report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Will that presentation be available online? And if anyone has specific questions, should they be reaching out to one or both of you about questions regarding that? I appreciate the presentation because it's been something that we repeatedly brought up throughout the year. So it would be helpful to address a lot of the questions, I think, that the public have brought up and that we've asked, so I appreciate it. I just want to be sure that it will be accessible to the public, and if they have questions, they can reach out.
So Mrs. Farrell has the presentation, and I'm sure it'll find its way on the website for everyone to access. And any questions that might pop up, of course, you could reach out to me directly, or even Dr. Henner shot, and one way or another, we'll collaborate and get you get you the answers that you need, okay?
Thank you.
Can I just ask one follow-up question as well?
Sure.
So I completely understand you can't list the approaches under special education, like programming, or or related services, or anything like that, but how are you guys making sure that when you find an approach that works for a child, that information's conveyed on the IEP so that the following year staff has that information? Is that included in like the present levels of performance in a way, or?
It would be indicated in the present levels of performance, but also the teachers can have communication with one another as students go, especially within the buildings. There's been talk of collaboration between buildings, the bridge years. But, you know, we have to also look at where our staffing is and where they are assigned for each year, which is something that we continue to do. So I think when we look at how instruction is delivered, it all goes back to the measurable annual goals and what the needs are. And while a student may be participating in some program this year, their needs may change, so that doesn't necessarily mean that that program might still be appropriate for them for the following year. So that's why it's important to have that collaboration time between the department and the teachers to be able to communicate that so we can meet the students' needs.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Carter, much appreciated.
Thank you. All right, we're going to keep things going in the direction of Mr. Von Jovan for the moment here. Thank you for all those presentations, very informative. We're going to move on to our next agenda item of our Monday tenure.
If Mr. St. Lawrence could join me just over to the side here, I'd appreciate it. So I just wanted to take a few moments. When I first came to the Goshen, you know, we were in search of a director, and I have to, I'm going to start from the beginning. So I started teaching and coaching on Long Island, 1988, various sports, but actually, my main sport was track and field. And in 1990, my fellow coach said, hey, we have to stop losing points in the hole vault. This is 1990. You know, I found this camp upstate. So I'm going to go, it's run by these two brothers, the St. Lawrence brothers. So I had heard of George St. Lawrence in 1990, when I was a wee lad. Now I come here, now certainly I came to Orange County, working in Orange County in 2000, in the 2000, 2001 school year. And George St. Lawrence, George St. Lawrence, you just kept hearing that name. So our ability to get Coach St. Lawrence back here to Goshen, this is the greatest acquisition since 1919, when the Yankees got Babe Ruth from the Boston Red Sox. Because they got the Babe, and his best years were still in front of him. And I truly believe that is the case here. I've done many different positions in a school district. So it's not a knock on anyone else, the, I think the three busiest positions in any school district is pretty universal. The high school principal, which I was one, the superintendent, and the athletic director. And the one job I would not want is the one I've never had, athletic director. It is just, you're constantly on, there is always a program happening. You need to know the rules in and out of every sport. You need to know the regulations, you need to know the state regs, you need to know other people, you need to know the coaches. So Coach St. Lawrence has all this. He is highly involved in sports. He is the director of cross-country, and has had multiple awards, including last and has had multiple awards, including last year was the, you know, distinguished athletic director for Section 9. So I can go on and on all night, but we have some snacks to enjoy here. So I just want to say it is absolutely my pleasure. And I am proud to call him a friend, but to have George St. Lawrence be appointed tonight, tenure as our full-time athletic director. Thank you very much. Many people in this room know that I never miss an opportunity to say a few words. So for the community watching and for my distinguished colleagues to my left and my colleagues in this room, I'm honored and humbled to work with you. To my community members who are here presently and to everybody who's out there listening, I promise to continue to serve the community, and you are my eyes and my ears for the benefit of our programs that I'm involved in. And lastly, but not least, to the Board of Education, it's a great honor to be back in this room and to work with all the people in this room. I assure you that reaching tenure is a milestone, which I've had a few times. But to have it in my hometown where my kids and where my wife graduated from, it's not just tenure for me, it's tenure for my family, it's tenure for what we do, and I'm honored and thankful to be your athletic director, leading coordinator, and helping. Thank you very much. That's it. No more words.
All right, and with that, we have a motion to appoint the Director of Health, Physical Education, Athletics, and the tenure referral. We have everyone unanimously, thank you. Be resolved upon the recommendations of the interim superintendent of schools. The Board of Education appoints George St. Lawrence as Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics at Goshen High School at a gross salary of $150,000 pro-rata effective October 15, 2025. Mr. St. Lawrence has permanent school district leader, permanent school administrator, supervisor, and permanent physical education certifications. Be further resolved upon the recommendations of the interns, interim superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the tenure appointment of George St. Lawrence in the tenure area of Director of Health, Physical, Physical Education, and Athletics effective October 15, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Official congratulations. Now can we have a motion for a brief recess? John and Ashley, all in favor? Opposed? All right, thank you. We will break momentarily and be back shortly. Thank you.
Great, everyone, please feel free to join us. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to reconvene. All right, very good. Moving on to our next item, our president's report. Just a few items here, a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Bon Jovi had talked about the importance of the chain of command. And I just wanted to thank him for that again, you know, even though we are board members, we are community members, we are parents. Uh, we are active and listen to everybody we can and. You know, I think recently we've, you know, heard some good examples of folks utilizing the chain, chain of command, so we do appreciate that. Uh, we feel that there's been great communication and thank you, Mr. Bon Jovi for, you know, supporting that. Those actions, so thank you, everybody out there who's been following the lead, we appreciate that. Um, a little bit later in our meeting, we're going to revisit during our open agenda items. Our discussion on the superintendent search and we're going to discuss a little bit, uh, the idea of having a survey. We brought it up in the last meeting. We have a few samples to look at and the board will be discussing that a little bit later on, so just keep that momentum going, so that'll be a discussion for later. And those were just really the two points I wanted to share for this evening. And so now we're going to move on to our next item, our super, uh, our super student. Our student representative report, before we do that, I'd like to introduce Madison Hunter, she's our alternate student rep, so welcome. And she'll be here joining Francesca, so I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, um, starting with Goshen High School, students celebrated a lively and memorable homecoming this past Saturday, a fun night for all. Uh, looking ahead, the college fair will be on October 21st at 7:00 PM. A reverie kicks off next week with the kickoff event taking place on Wednesday. And lastly, for Goshen High School and CJ Hooker, the five weeks occurred on October 3rd and the first marking period will conclude on November 7th. For middle school, picture day will be tomorrow and the 16th, the seventh and eighth grade dance will be taking place on October 24th. For GIS, picture day is on October 17th, the fifth grade Halloween dance will take place this Friday. With tickets available through the GIS PTO Facebook page. The book fair will be running from October 27th through October 31st. And lastly, both students from SAS and GIS have the opportunity to attend circus at the stadium on September 18th. And lastly, for SAS, um, it will be hosting its annual trunk or treat on October 24th at 6:00 PMs, 6:00 PM. Providing a safe and festive Halloween experience for both students and families, thank you.
Right, thank you very much Francesca and welcome, welcome again Madison. So moving on to our next item here, our board member committee legislative and Oxbow reports. Uh, I'll kick it off, we had another policy committee meeting. And just as a reminder, the policy committee has been meeting three members of the board. Every couple of Wednesdays, Wednesdays to review every policy that we have, we're doing a full audit. Doing a crosswalk from the old Erie One standard to now the NISBA standard. Those policies are written in line with education law, so many of those items don't change. Big thank you to Ms. Farrell that does a lot of the prepping for those meetings and Mr. Bon Jovi. Who takes the sections of those policies that may need to be reviewed by curriculum, by business, by buildings and grounds, by athletics. And they do a pre-review and have these policies reviewed by our staff, our senior staff. And they give feedback and so when then we meet, we read through word for word all of those policies and. Add any input we may have that's pertinent to the Goshen School District. So just a little reminder of what happens at the policy meetings, I think we're a good. Sixty, sixty-five percent of the way through the entire policy walk, we've gone through tons of sections and. We will continue to meet until it's complete and once that goal is completed. We will review quarterly updates and changes in technology as they come about and keep those meetings going, so. Just a brief overview on what we do on the policy committee, as a little reminder and we're keeping the work going. So I'll turn it over to anybody else, uh, Mr. Whedon, you want to jump in?
Sure, same vein, we also recently had a facilities committee meeting. It's a sane concept, we have three board members that are in, that we meet pretty regularly, we try to go over, uh, the building condition survey. So there's a survey done of all of our buildings, uh, that we use in addition to meeting not only with the board and the administration, but all those also buildings and grounds. So that we can get a current, so the survey is done every couple of years, but that way buildings and grounds will give us what may have changed in the time period. Uh, we always try to look at first of, uh, health and safety in the buildings, but also building envelope. Uh, if we don't take care of our building envelope being roofs and exterior, what are damage will just continue to cause, so that was one of the main focus of the last meeting. I thought it was very productive, uh, we still have some issues with some roofs in the high school that we really have to take a look at. In addition to, uh, we talked about having a, uh, master plan. We have this building here that, that we're looking to look at, uh, whether we sell it or what our future use is going to be in that. In addition to, uh, on a wide scale, I just mentioned with the roof in the high school and whatever improvements we have to do to try to get a picture community wise. Obviously, we're always trying to, uh, not waste any tax dollars. Part of that is, you know, everyone hates to spend money, but sometimes we have to spend money in order to protect the assets that we have here. So it was, it was productive and we'll continue to meet and hopefully have some sort of a more formal report as we get closer.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so the audit committee met tonight, um, it's again a group of three of us that, that come to the meetings, we meet a few times per year. Um, and we meet prior to the board meeting at 5:30. And what we go through, we had the presentation tonight, we go through that though in great depth. Um, and then it, we're given the summary at the board meeting, um, so we did do that tonight to go over all this material. The other committee that I'm personally on is the negotiation committee, again, that's a group of three of us. And that we only meet when we're up for negotiations for, um, the different collective bargaining units like the GTA, the GA and the CSEA. So those groups, um, when we do have those meetings, they're typically, um. Several of those meetings and it's, it's kind of to be determined how long those are going to take, um, the last time we went through it, it was a great process, I thought. Uh, yeah, those are the committees that I'm a part of and that's just kind of an overview of what that looks like.
So I'm also part of negotiations committee, there's nothing else to say about it. Um, I'm also the Oxbow delegate for our board, so Oxbow is the, uh, County School Board Association. And each school board in the county has a de- one delegate and an alternate, Tom's my alternate. And we meet monthly and usually there's some level of presentation and then kind of an open forum. Did meet recently, one of the interesting topics, uh, we all completed a survey, which I'm excited to see the results on is. How everybody's implementation of the cell phone ban. So I'm very curious to see what other districts are experiencing, I would say, I feel like ours is generally positive. Saw this, the survey accordingly. Uh, which is a great testament to everybody involved from administration to teachers to students, all do a great job, all in mind, so.
Yeah, wonderful, so, uh, thank you board members for going just a little bit deeper there, I thought it might be helpful, we talked about these committees. But what do we actually do on those, so thank you for a little bit of additional insight as to what's been happening and what we're doing. All right, continuing on, does anybody need any time to go through the policies for additional readings?
Yeah.
No, wonderful. All right, then we are going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Bon Jovi again for the interim superintendent's report.
I just wanted to make a comment on the policies, so, uh, this is the first reading for the policies. And if you're following along, there's a number of policies that deals with booster clubs, so, um. This is an amazing thing that we have, that we have so many, uh, parent organizations supporting our students at, not just, you know, sports, but in, in clubs and the grades. We just need to kind of get it organized a little bit, so the purpose of these policies, the, the policies aren't going to stop anything that's happening. It's really just going to make it safer and more organized for everyone. So I don't want anyone to worry about, uh, you know, these booster club policies. So these are, you know, because, you know, we're at the point where there's so many booster clubs and the booster clubs are kind of popping up, um, here and there. So as a superintendent, but even I can speak for the principals and advisors. I don't think there's anyone who could tell me all the booster clubs we have and who are the officers. Like, we, we don't know that, we don't know what's out there, we have, you know, sometimes there's fundraisers, we just get flyers, oh, there's a fundraiser. And then, you know, you end up with two, two, three or more fundraisers at the same time, they're selling similar items. So this is, the purpose of these policies is just to organize it, to make it better for everyone, not to stop anything. Once these policies have been passed with their second reading, we'll have an informational meeting with, uh, representative from all the boosters. Just so they understand the policies and know, and they know what's in them, okay? Before I get to my full report, I'll, I actually, I'd like to ask the principals, we'll get them out of the way, because, you know. They, uh, they're, they're chomping at the bit to tell about all the great things they have, so I want the principals to have a report to come on up to the podium and just give their building report if you don't mind.
Good evening, everyone, uh, I am Kristen Driscoll, I am the principal at SES. Um, I just wanted to start by saying, I know we're going to go into a little bit, but a big thank you to our school board this week is school board appreciation week, so I just wanted to say. A big thank you to all of our school board members for all of the dedication, I know it's a tireless job and you work a lot of hours outside of your. Other jobs that you have, so I just appreciate all of your dedication and your commitment to our community. Uh, this past month at SES, we got our PAWS program up and running and we actually welcomed our Goshen High School varsity cheerleaders. Um, to come and they put on skits for all of our students to teach the students about all the different, uh, portions of the PAWS program. Uh, the kids were super excited and, uh, Mr. Pantaleone actually lent us the Gladiator who also came. So it was super exciting for all of those kids to see that. Uh, we also welcomed the Goshen, uh, volunteer fire department and they brought their trucks and they did fire safety with all of our students. Uh, which is a big draw at SAS, our K to two students love seeing the fire truck show up and. Get to touch all the bells and whistles on there and it's a big day, so that was super exciting. Um, academically, we have some upgoing, uh, ongoing trainings with our staffs coming up, uh, we are working with Scholastic again. And have some Scholastic coaching going on with teachers in each of our grade levels. Uh, we are doing a different approach this year, um, Dr. Whitworth and I are working with Scholastic and doing. A coaching approach where the trainers are actually going to be pushing into the classrooms. And working with teachers more in-depthly on small group instruction and providing, uh, ways that we can use the resources to really meet the needs of our students in those individual classrooms. Um, Dr. Hendershot and I are working together with the Center for Discovery to bring in, um, some positive behavior training. For our special education teachers as well as our educa- uh, general education teachers. Uh, to really focus on what we could do proactively to meet the needs of students because their social emotional needs are changing and how can we. Really work to develop our classroom instruction to meet those needs. Um, and we are also going to be working with BOSI's coming up to bring in DataWise. Uh, which DataWise is a data cycle where we are going to be looking at different forms of data. To really make some more student informed decisions about our instruction, our instructional practices. So we're going to be partnering with BOSI's on that coming up this month as well. Uh, for fun stuff, we are working with the PTO and SEPSA on our trunk or treat on the 24th. Uh, from 5:30, 6:00 PM, we have a sensory friendly portion of trunk or treat. Where families can sign up to be a part of that, which will have less music and less costumes, a little bit less overwhelming for some of our students that that may be appropriate for. Um, and then we will be opening it up at 6:00 PM, but during that time, we will also have the comm room in our cafeteria, which will be hosted by SEPSA. And on the 31st at 10 o'clock, we will be having our Halloween parade at SAS. So anybody who's available and would like to come see adorable children in their Halloween costumes, get super excited, please come on down at 10 AM on Halloween. And those are all of our building updates.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I just want to echo the sentiments of Ms. Driscoll, happy board appreciation month, uh, just appreciate everything they do. Each and every day and thank you to our wonderful student board reps Francesca and Madison, wonderful job. Uh, so this past, uh, month, we were fortunate to bring a small team together, visit the Warwick School District to look at their. Rotating drop and community lunch, uh, platform that they're running and this is, uh, just to add on, we visited Cornwall last year. And it's a schedule that we're exploring, we're, we're excited to present to our central administration later this month as well. And just look at, you know, the, the, the benefits of how it could really help our learning community. Um, along with that, Mr. St. Lawrence and I, along with the village police, we worked together to do a presentation for our seniors. Uh, focused on a senior scavenger hunt, uh, this is something that's been around a while. Um, we met with, uh, chief of police, uh, Mr. Bon Jovi and myself and really looked at ways that we can keep our kids safe. Um, inside and outside the school, so we, we took an approach of empathy and compassion and what we can do as. Uh, not only school leaders, but community members and the message was well received and, and, and the kids, uh, listened and they did a great job, so we hopefully. Have a, a fun, safe school year for our students. Um, along with that, we're excited to host our PSAT this weekend, our students are, are working hard and, and they're going to do really well with that. Um, and something that's really nice of, a few years ago, when I started, there was an alumni Gordon Morrell who graduated in 1966. He donated $5,000 to our, to our school and, uh, half of that was used for the $5 challenge with Susan Armstead. And half was really started, uh, to build the kindness car. Uh, so this, uh, up inspiring Eagle Scout Liam Castelaine was really inquired to do another project for the kindness car. And, and Gordon was generous enough to donate more monies to support his Eagle Scout project, so. Um, whatever we do for our community, we, we appreciate Gordon and as an alumni supporting our initiatives and along with that. Um, along with our college fair that's coming up that Francesca and Madison so wonderfully described, we have instant decision day. Coming in the first week in November, this is a great opportunity for students to get instant decisions from, uh, some of, uh, SUNY schools such as SUNY Orange, SUNY Otayanta. Um, SUNY Portland will not be there, my alma mater, but, um, I told them I'm very disappointed. And then on the academic front, uh, we, we started doing a professional development style faculty meetings and we've been really digging into artificial intelligence. At the last meeting, I worked with John Reddicker, we, uh, introduced Magic School and some of our, our teacher leaders that are using it. Uh, but we're going to look at use at the Gemini platform and then also Notebook LM is, which is a great site that actually creates moderated podcasts. Of any notes or procedures and, uh, we're also looking at some new dual enrollment courses and so we're going to explore those at no cost to district, thank you.
Good evening, board members, uh, Mrs. Zindell, excuse me. I'm a little sick. Uh, Mr. Zindell and I would like to, uh, recognize and, and thank the board members for all their hard work. A lot of people in the community think you just come out once every two weeks and, and said, we all, we, we who work with you know that's not true. Uh, we are in our eighth week of school. Uh, at, at CJ Hooker Middle School and I would just like to take you back, uh, to, at the beginning of those eight weeks, about four days before the start of school. Janelle and I were walking through the hall, tripping over furniture. Tipping over construction material, tradespeople, HVAC guys and we looked at each other and say, it's going to be a race to the finish. But I'm sure when you did your tour of the building, you saw what we saw when we walked in, a pristine building, thank you to buildings and grounds, so we take the shout out to them. Um, we've had a very good start to the school year, uh, we had an excellent open house. Uh, parents were pleased, we had, uh, a great number of questions from parents which we were able to handle. Uh, I think most people went away very, very happy. Um, one of the things that is new this year for us is the free breakfast, the free breakfast works very, very well. Uh, our kids are eating, they're getting through the lines, okay, we needed a little tweaking at the beginning. Uh, but they're getting their, their food and they're getting their class and shout out to our, our, uh, lunch people for that. One of the things that we re-instituted was recess at lunch. If you've ever been in a CJ Hooker. Middle school cafeteria when it's full of children. And I mean, it is full of children because we have three lunch periods that are packed to the rafters. It's not a good situation for them to just eat and sit there because they have a tendency to. They have an itch, they need to scratch it and they kind of poke at one another. So what we were able to do this year with the blessing of central office administration and I believe the board. Was to, uh, reinstitute outdoor recreation. But we also have a supervised indoor recreation with physical education teachers, teaching certain skills. That has worked out exceptionally well. Um, we've had school, uh, pictures coming up tomorrow. It's a little late for me, I probably have bags under my eyes when I have my pictures taken, but, uh. Uh, we're excited about that, not the bags, that the pictures on, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday. One of the things that we did this year, uh, our lockdown drills this year incorporated a large number of Goshen Village Police Officers. So that made them more and more familiar with our building as opposed to just having certain schools are there. Um, and our regular, um, resource officer. Also, today we met with the entire student body to kind of give them a grade at how well they were doing as far as school was concerned. Uh, what we instituted starting today is what's called the Random Act of Kindness Award. Which anytime a student does something that's out of the ordinary, to be kind to another student or to an adult. They are going to receive a certificate. That's called a Random Act of Kindness and we'll have their picture taken and we'll get, uh, them out, uh, out on the, the internet as well. Basically, it's been a privilege for me to come back and to share, uh, going to school because even. At my age, I still love going to school every day. Uh, we also have a. You have, which, Janelle, do you have, do you have the show coming up for Friday on your, okay, all right, that, that's me for the evening. Thank you very much for your kind and listening, listening.
Thank you for everything tonight, um, I just want to echo everything that everybody said beforehand, we appreciate all of your hard work. Um, and echo what Mr. Reese said, we've had a great start of the year, um, our teachers came in. Ground running and it's so amazing to work with such great educators who are dedicated. Um, I'm going to give a little snapshot of what's coming up the next couple of weeks, um, of course, we have so many clubs and activities that are happening coming up, so please. Continue to follow what we're doing, um, there's a lot of great activities that our teachers are, um, running. Just to echo, uh, we had our student quarterly check-in and that's where we went over, uh, school expectations, reviewed with students. Um, based on discipline data that we're seeing and just general behaviors and also. Reward students for the things that they're doing great and, um, we're excited to start this new, um, award for students. Um, coming up, our conference day, we are also planning, um, to work in partnership with PPS and Center of Discovery to provide avenues, we're doing a workshop model at, um. For our portion of the building, um, PD Day, um, part of that's going to include, um, some different avenues where teachers get to pick and choose their workshops, where they're going to. Um, all well-rounded, uh, we really care about the whole person, so we're going to be including wellness activities as well led by our teachers. Um, in addition to, um, different activities based on, um, student, teachers' needs, we're kind of still finalizing the topics. Um, and we're going to leverage our teacher leaders, we have something that's really unique in our building, we have a lot of experienced educators in that building and so we want to leverage that knowledge. To share with the rest of our staff, um, so that's going to be coming on November 4th. Um, our acting club performance is this Friday, um, from 7 to 9, they're performing 15 Reasons Not to Be in a Play, please come by. Tickets will be sold at the door, we're really excited, this will be, um, their first, um. Performance of the year, so please come by. Um, next Wednesday, um, October 22nd, we have our NJHS, NJHS induction. Um, we get to honor our students who are hard workers and, um, we're really excited to be able to induct them. Um, this, on the following Friday, um, 7th and 8th, like our wonderful student representatives already announced. Um, we have our seventh and eighth grade dance, which we're excited, we already had our sixth grade game night, which was a complete success, it was so much fun seeing the students participate, play, have fun. Um, we, our teachers set up different activities in the gym and it was such a fun night for all of our students, so we're excited to continue that. Um, another, um, our Leo Club is raising funds for the American Cancer Society, so every day at the end of the day, they're selling ribbons, cookies, it's always. They're trying to get the kids out the door, but they're trying to stop and support, so they, so far, they just, within a week, they've raised a hundred dollars, they're going to keep going. And everything that they earn, they're going to make sure they donate to the American Cancer Society. Um, and that's just a little snapshot of what's going at CJ Hooker and we're excited to keep showing all the great things that we're doing and share more, but thank you for everything.
Okay, and I have an update from Goshen Intermediate School, so, uh, on behalf of Dr. Whitworth and his team. Goshen Intermediate School is preparing for the fifth grade Halloween dance this Friday, I'm sure that'll be a very fun event, he's got everything, uh, all set up with the team. Got their supervision set and they are ready to roll. The All-Star Parent Email System has been fully launched, so every student earning an All-Star, which is a part of our PBIS. Uh, has a certificate now emailed home and a printed copy is then posted on the All-Star board. Uh, and that will earn 25 flock points for that student's flock. The homeroom attendance winners have been announced, uh, and so Mrs. Capozzi, Mrs. Nat and Mr. Mahoney. In a tie at the grade five level with Mrs. Holland and Mrs. Crop, so those are your homerooms. Or your attendance winners this month. Um, in a more business sense, if you will, the work continues, um, at GIS regarding the MTSS frameworks. Uh, and so we continue to refine tiers and services, of course, tier one, tier two, tier three services. Um, AIS teachers are receiving additional training in IXL, foundations and just words. Uh, and currently looking into Hagerty Bridge the Gap, uh, professional development. Uh, and so again, as you see, we're continuing to build on some of that, uh, multisensory supplemental materials. Uh, also, we have a small team beginning, uh, to work with Scottstown Avenue School, uh, regarding DataWise protocols. Uh, and so right now, we're looking to not only retrieve, but better utilize our data in that decision-making process and that'll pop up again as we move into a few items on my report. Uh, and then also, we have a small group joining the Restorative Implementation Leadership Training offered through NICE Ed. In partnership with Community Dispute Resolution Centers, uh, to expand restorative practices at GIS. And that is the Goshen Intermediate School.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, thank you principals. So continuing with my report, uh, at the end of September, Dr. Carter and I had an opportunity to attend the annual NISCUS Superintendent's Conference. So NISCUS is New York State Council of School Superintendents, this is an annual conference. Where, uh, superintendents and assistant superintendents get together, um, to collaborate. to collaborate and certainly lots of different sessions to go to, so I want to give you kind of a quick update on some of the sessions we attended. We went to Education Poll Discussion. That was with Senator Shelley Mayer, so she's the chairperson of Education Committee. And she talked about, you know, she's very worried about the budget, the state budget, and that's going to be you know, they say this every year, but it's going to be a tough budget. We did a hot topic roundtable. So this was, there's about six or eight tables and you, every 15 minutes, they kind of ring a bell and you switch. So some of the topics included, you know, budget secrets, you know, how to save money, special ed, teacher certification, and then the new portrait of a graduate. So those were nice sessions when we went to. The, traditionally, the closing ceremony is with Commissioner Rosa and her staff. So she gives us an update on the state, but the keynote speaker also had a follow-up session. His name was, is a retired superintendent, Joe Sanfilippo. He's from Falls Creek, Wisconsin. And he had a nice message to share, which I, I shared with the cabinet and with the staff here at Main Street. So it's the whole concept of, you know, we, look, we all have tough jobs and this is in any line of work, you have a job, you have a tough job. But to begin and end your day with joy. And that will change your, your day, make it a little happier, begin and end the day with joy. So this is how you do it. So we're, most of us are creatures of habit. So think of whatever your job is, when you go to your job, sit down, and he said eight things, that's a lot. I cut it down to six. Write down the first six things you generally do when you get to work. You can do this on your own, you kind of, you write down the six things you do because usually you do them pretty much in the same order every day. Then circle the ones that you like to do. And then just do those first. Reverse the order a little bit. When you get home from your job, write down the six or eight things that you do when you get home. Usually it's pretty much the same thing. And again, circle the ones that bring you joy. There's probably more that bring you joy in that list. But do those ones first. So when you get home, so, you know, don't kick the cat until the eighth thing. Do all the things that you like to do first. You know, so you're beginning and ending your day with joy. I thought that was a nice message that he gave to us. I wanted to give the board and the public an update on the school principal interviews. So Dr. Carter put together a great team of support staff, teachers, administration, and they conducted those interviews just this past Friday. So we will be continuing that process now that, you know, we're already midweek this week, tomorrow. Between this week and next week, we will hold the second round of interviews with the goal of, at the November 10th board meeting, to have an appointment for that position. With the start date to be determined by, you know, who the person is and, you know, what obligations they may or may not have to any present job. Though it seems early, you never know. So every year, as a superintendent, I always like to, early in the year for the board, but it really is more even for the public, to go over and review the inclement weather decision-making. So I'm talking two-hour delays, snow days, how does this happen? So first of all, if we, if I get the goofy life again, you know, a lot of times people get mad at my decisions. I mean, so there's always, if I'm doing my job right, there's going to be some people happy and some people not happy. Now, a weather person, you can be wrong most of the time and most people are fine with it. You know, there's a 50% chance of snow, which means it's either going to snow or it's not going to snow. Like, what a job! But just so you know, the decision isn't made in a vacuum, which means a lot goes into the decision for a two-hour delay or a snow day before that decision's made. So certainly, in a perfect world, you know that something's coming usually, right? We know the weather a day or two before, we're already talking about the weather. What does it look like? So we're monitoring the weather, that's number one. So certainly the day before, in the morning of, I'll jump to that. So the morning of, before any decision is made, here's what has happened. I've already been talking about the weather for a few days with a number of people. But that morning, probably starting at, you know, 4:00 AM or earlier, I've already spoken with the, with James McGard, our Building and Grounds person. I spoke with the town supervisor. I've spoken with the highway supervisors. I've also communicated with all the other superintendents in the county and certainly with Karen Wells about the buses. And she's already spoken to her fellow directors, how are the roads? Perhaps someone has already gone out and driven some of the roads. So it depends on a lot of different things. But really, by about 5:00 AM, the call has to be made, at least though the parents might not get the call till a little after that, maybe 5:30. Really, the first bus drivers are in and they're getting out on the road at 5:30. So a decision really has to be made at about 5:00 AM, or even a little earlier if possible. You know, my philosophy, and I've shared this with the board a little bit, you know, if we have the information, I am a big fan of if we know something is coming. And sometimes I've been wrong, that does happen. But if we know something is coming, I always felt it is very helpful to parents and guardians if they hear something the night before. So if I can, and if the situation, you know, he fits it, I will, let's say, hey, we know, they are calling for snow, we're not exactly sure when it's going to fall. There is no harm in calling a two-hour delay the night before. So calling a snow day the night before, you better be positive that there's a big snowstorm coming. But a two-hour delay gives parents and guardians the ability to, you know, get some coverage and some supervision for their children. Because if we wait for a two-hour delay, which that's probably going to happen, this isn't a perfect system, when we wait for a two-hour delay, and some of our Y programs, you know, we have hundreds of kids in these programs. And then, you know, we do a two-hour delay and now those parents are really scrambling to find someone to watch their children. So stay tuned. I mean, I hope it doesn't happen too much. Last couple winters haven't been too bad and they say it's, it might be a snowy winter, I'm not sure who "they" is. But I will be on top of it and just know that, you know, we're always going to err on the side of caution and safety. Finally, we were talking a little bit about school board appreciation, so, you know, the board and district. I know the public realizes this, so let's, it's tough to get people to volunteer for anything. But who wants to volunteer for a job that is highly stressful, calls for a lot of time, and it certainly can at times disrupt your life. You can't even go to the supermarket without being accosted by people at times for, you know, because they have great ideas of how to run the school district. All, of course, can volunteer with no pay. So I certainly, on behalf of the administration, you know, and all faculty and staff, want to thank the board for their service to the students of the Goshen Central School District. And we truly appreciate it. And we do have something to present to the board, so Miss Spah, maybe Dr. Carter understands, can you give me a hand here?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Maybe I can borrow that just for a moment. Just so I can explain. So you know, I've been in the business a long time and, you know, different appreciation, this appreciation, principal appreciation and boss appreciation, so you know, Mrs. Farrell has done an excellent job every year, you know, taking care of this. But we kind of, we put our heads together and thought, well, what's something that we could get that really, you know, shows that we really care. It takes some time. Not that other things aren't nice, but, you know, how many plaques and trophies do you need, really? So we wanted to get you something that was a little more personal. So we have these baskets and inside your basket, we do have some swag compliments of high school and the care card, I believe. We have some blueberry fruit spread. We have some honey. It's a little kind of a fall package. I believe we have some tea. And this is the icing on the cake. So we have these homemade scones. So these are apple cinnamon cookies and then blueberry scones made by our very own professional baker, Dr. Hendershot. So she is a renowned baker. I believe she beat Bobby Flay, actually. On the show, she just doesn't like to brag about it. But we got a taste of these one day and everyone was wondering, where did you buy these? Where can I get them? We were going crazy. Everyone thought I brought them. I wanted to take credit, but I couldn't. So thank you, a special thanks to Dr. Hendershot for taking the time to do all this. So thank you, board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is very much appreciated. Thank you to everybody for, for the kind words. And, you know, we're glad to be serving the community the best we can, so thank you so much. This is very.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes. Yep. I don't know, scroll.
Put them back here for protection. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bonjovi. All right, moving on to our next item, our Assistant Superintendent for Business Report, Ms. Lorraine Van Plammer.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you all. So we did issue a banking RFP last month, but I had a few banks ask if we could extend it, which makes sense. We were trying to meet a pretty tight timeline, so we did extend the banking RFP to be due tomorrow, actually. So we will have a recommendation for the board at the next meeting in November rather than tonight. And to piggyback on Mr. Whedon's discussion about the facilities planning, just wanted to talk about that too. It's on my report as well. James McCardle and I met a few times to discuss the condition of the buildings and to go through the building condition survey, plan your plan and come up with some items for you to consider. And we presented it to the Facilities Committee last week. And now this week, Mr. Bonjovi and I have a meeting with our financial consultants, BPD, Bernie Donegan's office, to help us plan the financial portion of what you would like to see done throughout the district. So we'll have more information for you on that at the next meeting, if not sooner, and what the potential impact to taxpayers could be. And our state aid forms have been finalized, completed and accepted, so they're in time for the November 15th database, which is important because then they will put our state aid numbers out for the current year, '25, '26, and they will be more accurate than they would have been if we weren't on time, so just to give you an idea of that. And then we have expenditures going into our reports for the month. It's the month of September that I'm discussing. The general fund expenditures in September were $7 million. And I don't know if you recall the number last month, but in August, they are not typically that high. They are higher in September because our staff are all returning, so we have more payroll, higher payroll to make as well as other expenditures, supplies for teachers and whatnot. We did receive some revenue still for '24, '25. We received $21,000 in general aid, just a small amount that we would do after their books were closed. And we received BOSI's aid, $1.8 million also for '24, '25 books. Then for the new year, we've received lottery aid, $4.5 million. And VLT lottery aid, $96.3 thousand. And for taxes, we started our collections for September. We've received $25.3 million in our tax collections, which is up from last year, so that's good, people are paying on time. And our interest revenue for this month was $81.9 thousand. For the budget status reports, we have September 30th, the expenditures from July through September 30th were $13.7 million or 14.2%. And that is slightly up from last year where we were 12% last year. And however, our income was $64.8 million or 70% of our budget earned. And last year, it was 69%. So we're a little bit higher than that. And that's all I have for tonight. Any questions?
Quick question, maybe, we don't have the answer right now. We're talking about budgets and projections. I'm just curious to know where we stand in the process of our BOSI's capital improvements. And, you know, how many payments we'll have and, you know, stand with that.
So this year, we do level off. This is the, '25, '26 is the last year of the increase in that line item. And now we will be leveling off.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Personnel and Technology Report, Dr. Mrs. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Good evening, everyone. So as Mr. Bonjovi had mentioned, I did have a chance to also attend NISCUS toward the end of September. So I first wanted to thank Mr. Bonjovi and the Board of Education for supporting me and providing that opportunity. It was an outstanding time, many great takeaways. I did attend many of the sessions with Mr. Bonjovi, however, I did have a chance to attend one of interest. So I did split off and I attended the Building Strategic Culture and Climate Initiatives for Sustainable Impact. And I think it's important to stay aware of climate, right? Because climate plays a critical role, of course, in growth and success in an organization. And so there were, there were many superintendents as a part of the panel who spoke about kind of that critical moment where they realized that maybe culture wasn't so good in their district, but focused more so on what they did to recognize and turn around and take action steps and measures to really get it back to where they needed it to be to ensure success of the entire school community. And so my biggest takeaway, in addition to everything that all of those with great levels of experience spoke of, define trust as a team, so you can act under the same framework of trust. And I think that's a really good message, right? So when I, when I think of school culture, when I think of climate initiatives, build a climate of trust so that we can all operate under the same framework. So that was my, my great takeaway. And again, I'm very appreciative of that. Last time we had a meeting, I kind of gave a little bit of a roadmap of where we were going, of course, for many reasons, the majority of which are mandatory, right? So we talked a little bit about our targeted monitoring review, which I had mentioned is a very large undertaking. And so just today, we received notification that all of the evidence that we submitted for the targeted monitoring of Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, McKinney-Vento, foster care, everything had been reviewed and everything has met requirements. And so our targeted monitoring is now closed out. I think we had a rather successful '24, '25 school year. And I know I can speak to Ms. Van Plammer and say, it is a relief. So thank you for collaborating through that with me and our departments. I had mentioned that we're going through a plan for the School Comprehensive Education Plan due to the targeted school designation at Scottstown. And so we continue to work through that process. Mrs. Driscoll and I had an opportunity to meet with Mrs. Klingbale from NICE Ed to actually go through what we have down right now for our comprehensive education plan for Scottstown and to address the needs of a GIS in that subgroup. And so we feel like everything is moving in the right direction. And Mrs. Driscoll and her team now will begin to actually go through the student interviews to collect some of the data on their perceptions of the program. Of course, once again, at an age-appropriate level, right? So that is, that's going to happen now. And those surveys are being sent out. I believe, Ms. Driscoll, we're aiming for Monday. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can have a day all ready to go by Monday.
And so, once we get all of that situated, that survey data will be shared with faculty and staff on 10/29. That's the goal as it stands right now. And that'll be submitted to NICE Ed immediately thereafter, once it's all organized. Okay? So I believe in one of our previous meetings, Mrs. Soldi, you may have asked about the CIG grant that we spoke of. And so we've been putting that together and you heard a little bit about DataWise this evening. And so when we write that grant to submit, we are very hopeful. And so when we write that grant to submit, we are very hopeful that we can put DIBELS for K two in that through Amplify, which would be the online version. And so that'll help us to better monitor, diagnose some of the needs and really focus on those foundational literacy skills. And so we're looking to put that in the grant, we do have a quote for that, that came in. And then you also heard, as I had mentioned, DataWise, and so we're looking to do up to ten full day sessions. We may add on to that because right now it appears that our quota is through BOSI's. And so with grant money, you know, we would probably move a little bit further with that. And then I actually met again today with Emery Rupho of Education Elements to kind of pare down a little bit more on what we're looking for by way of MTSS development. And so, you know, I had talked to him about auditing our current programs and conducting a needs assessment, which I think would be very helpful. And then around that needs assessment to design PD, of course, our focus will be K two, K three, right? But anytime you go through any revamp or or any PD revolving around MTSS, you want it to be standardized and consistent throughout the district. And so we're looking to to expand that throughout K twelve. So hoping to find a way to kind of operate with and through grant monies to make that happen. When I had spoken with Emery this afternoon, we talked about truly defining tier one, tier two and tier three services and really what that looks like, because our billing levels, they're working very hard, right, on tier one. But that is one of the most important pieces, is catching it at the classroom level or at a tier one level so that we can diagnose and treat everything right there before it progresses to tier two, moves to tier three and potentially into special education services. And so I'm just going to wait for for that as the final piece now, after our second meeting, to pare that down and hopefully get a proposal that we can submit. So that's where we're at with that. As of Thursday last week, all of the educator eval data has been prepared. And so all, all of those calculations district wide are now complete. And so we're going to upload those to Level Zero in the coming days, so that's finalized. And then Mr. Bonjovi and I have have gotten a little deeper on November fourth conference day. And so we now know that our PE staff is going out to the New York State AFRC Conference locally. We have our music staff going out to OCMEA. We do have Scholastic coming in-house for our K six people. And then we've got multiple PPS trainings regarding FBA and VIP. So school psychologists will get a little bit more in-depth training on the creation of FBAs and implementations of, and creations of BIPs. And then some classroom management and management of non-compliant students for both special education and genative teachers. So that, that rounds out our conference day in addition to a few other items that we're elaborating on term. That wraps up my report for this evening. Before I end, I do want to echo sentiments of everyone in this room. Your, your time and dedication to the school and the community, it doesn't go unnoticed. We all know that it's through volunteerism and time away from your families, which is all very important. And so I'd like to individually say thank you, but of course, I know that I speak on behalf of everyone here. So thank you very much for the need to do.
Thank you very much. I, I think it's really great, the feedback that we've heard from the NISCUS conference. I think it's excellent suggestion, ensuring that you had a chance to go, Dr. Carter. Hearing some of that feedback and some of those presentations, it's just very informative and beneficial to us to, you know, see what you guys are looking at. So we appreciate you having a chance to get over there and, you know, participate in some of these sessions.
Thank you.
Really great idea. All right. Forward. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, we have Brett and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools. The Board of Education accepts the retirement of Kristen Green, English teacher, effective February first, twenty twenty six. Ms. Green has been with the district for thirty years. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Diane Benizi, teaching assistant, effective October seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Ms. Benizi has been with the district for fifteen years. Be it further resolved, Board of Education approves the remainder of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and good luck to you both on your retirement, if you're listening and you're here. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors. We have no old business, moving on to the new business. Would anybody like any agenda items pulled to the side? No. Great, so we need a motion to approve the new business. We have Ashley and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the new business items as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fantastic. All right, no privilege of the floor items. All right, thank you very much. So moving on to board member comments, open agenda items. Nobody has anything to bring up, I had the point from earlier, but.
I just wanted to say one thing regarding the consent agenda and Ms. Benizi retiring. I want to particularly wish her well in retirement. While it's said on the consent agenda that she was with the district for fifteen years, twenty five years ago, I was in a serious automobile accident on my way to school. I missed a period of time and Ms. Benizi was my tutor. And while I would say that I always brag about how proud I am to be a national alumni, I probably wouldn't be alumni without her. So I just wanted to give her that shout out and say, you know, a lot of, a lot of kids were very benefitted, very benefited by her being here, and my son included, she'll be missed, so.
Very nice, thank you. I second that, it's very true. Very, very true. Any other open agenda items? Great, so I just briefly wanted to revisit our discussions on the survey. We talked about having a survey established as a way to just do some data collection and get some insight as to qualities and characteristics that people might be looking for in our future superintendent and the different stakeholder groups that maybe we should reach out to. So thank you again, Mrs. Farrell, for putting together some initial information, which I shared with the team earlier today. So I would just like to hear your input as to the direction we're going to head here, we don't necessarily have to get into the specific questions that would be asked. But if you take a moment and and want to give some feedback on the format, there was also a reference to another school district survey that was done. I think we have a fairly decent platform to start with. And again, any open feedback and input will be welcome, and we'll refine this and move things forward.
Just reviewing, you, you did a great job putting this together. I was happy it covers all the points of what we've been looking at, community, I really don't, I, I think it's extremely thorough. I don't have anything to add to it, I just appreciate the work you put into it.
I also like the format, I, I like that it would be an overall data collector and then you'd fill out whether you were an admin, a teacher, a support staff, a parent, a community member. I like that it's all in one place and not tailored to one specific stakeholder group. So I, I personally like that, and I think that works out rather nicely. No other comments on content? All right, what about rollout? So we had also had a side conversation regarding, maybe this goes out as a mailer. Maybe there's a QR code that you can scan from the website or just, you know, so it's digital. Any thoughts and feedback on how we sent out the information?
I like the digital approach.
I would just add, digital approach with an option, that if we do have someone that won't, that they could put a request in. So instead of spending district resources, money to send all this out, that we just do target it, and that they have the ability to request it, we would send out a small portion.
Yeah, I like that as well, maybe there's some hard copies here, but then also maybe an email request to have something sent to your own. Yeah, definitely support that, make sure everyone has a avenue to get there as opposed to just paper going everywhere. All right, good. Great, that was very easy, so we're good on the content, we're good on the when, which we'll use this as a data collection. So, you know, we'll take a little bit of time and we'll consider how this rolls out in our timeline and, you know, get something going. Fantastic. Any other open agenda items anybody would like to bring up? All right, fantastic, very good, great, so moving on. Let's see, we need a motion for executive session. All right, we have John, Brett. Be resolved that the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person or persons, tax or surorary litigation. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.